Hello, everyone. Hello, everyone. Thank you for attending this special town meeting. Please, please move over and make room because there's still a lot of people out the door waiting in line amazingly. We are going to open up tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance.
We don't have a flag.
We don't have a flag? No way. Yeah. Pretend there's a flag over there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The time is now 6:12 and I'm going to call the meeting to order and have the town clerk read the warrants.
To either of the constables of West Bridgewater in the county of Plymouth, greeting. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of West Bridgewater qualified to vote in elections and town affairs to meet at the West Bridgewater Middle Senior High School Auditorium. Pursuant to within the warrant, I have this day notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of West Bridgewater qualified to vote in elections and town affairs to meet at the time and place in mentioned by posting 15 attest copies of within warrant at various locations throughout precinct one and two, 14 days at least before the time of holding the aforementioned special town meeting. Patrick Galligan, Constable of West Bridgewater.
Thank you. So as a special town meeting, we're all here for these five articles. These are the articles that are going to be up tonight for discussion with the town. If you're new here to town meeting, I try to keep everything pretty clear as we go along. We're going to first start by having a presentation up here. Once the presentation concludes, there will be no discussion and then we're going to go right into the articles. So once we go into the articles, that's when we can have discussion on the presentation or any questions that are relevant to the article in discussion. Make sense? Perfect. So we're going to start with the presentation.
Good evening. Everybody hear me okay? Great. My name's Jeff Ryan. I am sitting at this table as a member of the Finance Committee, but for the last four years, I've also been a member of the Recreational Space Committee. We're here tonight. We've got an agenda to this presentation. It's very similar to the agenda we followed throughout the four years in identifying the problem, you know, figuring out how to fix it. Talked about costs. We're here to vote tonight. We'll discuss the tax impact and should items pass, we will talk through the post-vote timeline. So the committee itself is a pretty broad committee when you look at it from a town perspective. We have 10 people on the committee ranging from Anthony, David, Chris, Tim, Janice, Jen, our athletic director, Greg for representing. Glenn here from football, Bill Flynn for the school committee, and then myself as part of the Athletic Boosters. Also want to thank, I want to thank all those members for their time and efforts over the last four years as I think we're putting in front of you a good product tonight. I also want to take a moment and thank CHA, CHA Michael and Carly here tonight. They produced what we asked for at the end of the day and we asked for it many different ways and went through many different revisions and they were able to sort of take our vision and put it on paper. So thank you. I also want to point out before we start that those 10 people, there might be one or two that will see some benefit, maybe their children on these fields. So the work of this committee wasn't self-serving, if you will. There's no direct benefit. My kids, many of the kids are out of this high school, it's great high school and are on to college. So it's not like we were sitting here trying to work, organize sports and try to make our lives, our children's lives better directly in this process. We have, I have past president of Boosters, past president of YAA. We have a lot of experience on this committee, 30 some years of leading one of the youth sports groups in town and it's that, it's that experience that I think produced what we have here tonight. The problem, if you will, as identified by the committee, the town's grown considerably over the last 20 years, probably more than that, but I've been in town for 20 years and feel comfortable speaking to that. In addition to the growth that's happened over the last 20 years, we have another slide that we'll bring up, talks about the fact that there's another 100-plus homes on the books to move forward in the next couple of years in town. During those 20 years that I've been here, we added one field, one baseball field, youth baseball, baseball field tucked in behind the two fields that now exist at Town Hall. We also built this high school. When we built this high school, we actually lost two fields in the process. So net-net over the last 20 years, we dropped one field as a town while our population has significantly increased during those times. Also in the last 20 years, we've seen organized activity become more and more a part of youth development and youth growth. You know, gone, I think, are the days for the most part where you put your, get on your bike, at that point it was without a helmet, get on your bike, head out in the street and come home and the streetlights come on, right? That doesn't happen as much anymore. And with that, youth, organized youth activities have taken place and have sort of changed the landscape. Our current fields, they get overused. If you look to the right, if we'll just talk soccer real quick, we have 514, and those are, those are unique individuals. We didn't double count anybody or anything else like that. We have 514 individuals, 442 of them that primarily play on two grass fields. Those are the two fields at the Howard School in particular. And that lower field, as you drive by after it rains, you, everybody's seen puddles. And basically what happens, Chris and the Public Works Department do a tremendous job trying to keep those fields up to date, but ultimately what happens when you're running 400 kids over weekly, non-stop from 2:00 in the afternoon to probably 6, 7:00 at night, the fields, there's no grass that exists that can, that can handle that type of abuse. And as the season goes on, most of that field turns to dirt and when it rains, most of that field turns to mud, which is obviously a maintenance issue, but it's also a safety issue for a lot of our athletes. With the, our fields are also maxed out and it's not just our fields, our basketball courts, our fields. We're at the point where we have multiple requests to add additional sports, i.e. lacrosse at the, at the youth level, probably at the high school level, some middle school soccer, additional basketball. We take a lot of basketball out of town right now to play in travel leagues because of the limit, we really have one gym that meets our needs. So again, to the right, soccer identified as a large need. Also to the right, basketball identified as a large need. And then the third large need was youth football. Those of you that are out and about at night, you watch youth football practice on the side of the Spring Street School, you watch youth football practice on top of the septic tank at the Howard School and you also sometimes watch youth practice out here at 9:00 at night, little kids out here practicing because that's the time that they can get to actually get on a field and practice. So in summary, the problem, we've grown a lot, our facilities have not grown at all. Our facilities have actually decreased. And now we'll go to the next slide. How do we fix it? Again, I mentioned, we've been meeting since 2019. We've toured every facility in town. If you, if you don't know, we have the two, our soccer fields are primarily limited to the two fields at the Howard School. On occasion, we also have the field here, the turf field at the high school, but that field is primarily used for football and field hockey during the week. Soccer tends to practice at the high school level over in the Howard School field as well as youth primarily practices at the Howard School field. When field hockey and football are done during the day here, that's when youth football gets some time on the field. Basketball, we have the one court here that is fully occupied during the week with just high school sports. Our other teams are practicing at the Howard Gym. Those of you, if you've never been to the Howard Gym, if you don't stop fast, you're going to go into the wall pretty hard on each end. And if you're sitting in a chair watching a game and you extend your legs, you're going to triple player as they go by. It is not an ideal court. And then once we throw some snow out there and people walking in, it's a hazard. We've gotten by over the years, but it's a hazard and as the town continues to grow and we forecast growth, those additional 100 homes and as things continue to move, it's just not something that, that we feel like we can sustain in that building. And the Roselle Gym's even smaller. So identifying issues like those, we came up with, with some solutions. The first solution would be to increase the number of fields for youth sports and that brings us to the Russo Intergenerational Park. That'll be Article One and Article Two tonight is there's a couple of choices between those two articles. Our next was to increase the number of fields for high school sports. That'll be Article Three. And then finally, increase outdoor facilities to meet current needs. As we started this, we had a lot of requests for pickleball, some outdoor basketball courts, additional tennis courts, walking trails. It's not just strictly sports as you think about it and we'll get into that a little bit, but that last piece will be Article Four. A real quick slide on growth. In 2010, the town census was at 6,900 people. Our 2020 census, we're at 7,700 people, an 11.5% increase. I mentioned, we're looking at increase of, you know, another 100 units minimum over the next few years. I'm not going to read them, but you can see them on the screen. That's where we come up. Without any other development, with just what we have on the books, if you are in the planning stages right now, we will increase our population by another 1,000 people. Another 1,000 people over the next couple of years. We already don't have room for what we have for our youth athletics on our current fields. Those 1,000 people, there will be, obviously there'll be young, young kids in there, young athletes in there looking to play. So we came in front of town meeting, it was during COVID in June of 2020 and we, at that time, town meeting approved the purchase of the Russo property. When that property was, was purchased, we as a group said that we would come back to the town with choices and that's what we're here for tonight. We have Article One and Article Two. Greg will present those in just a moment, but they specifically deal with the Russo property and choices for youth sports. We have Article Three, which Bill Flynn will present, which deals with increasing fields at the high school. We have Article Four, I'll come back and present that, which deals with pickleball and outdoor basketball and things along those lines. So to keep our promise, we, coming back and providing choices and hopefully we have a good, healthy and friendly discussion tonight about all those choices. Friendly discussion about all those choices. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Greg and let him go through Article One. Thank you.
So Article One, as you can see, this relates to the intergenerational complex over on Lincoln Street, the Russo complex. I'm not going to read through it, I'll read it later on when we, when we vote, but I know you were handed it out as well. But this is, as you go to the next slide, this is the All-In Intergenerational Park, which includes 24,000 square foot multifurbsch gymnasium, which if you know the gym at the high school here where it's two courts running side by side and then one full-size court, that's essentially the side, the number of courts at that gymnasium. We can also have the ability to use it for other things such as indoor pickleball or other sports, you know, at the information session, someone asked about footsaw, which is indoor soccer. So that would be another opportunity you could use it for. In addition, the other highlights include two turf fields. Again, multi-use, we're thinking football, lacrosse, soccer, field hockey, all of those fit inside those fields. Currently at the youth level, just to take a step back for a second, for those of you that don't know the youth sports complex is set up in this town, we don't have, you know, we don't have West Bridgewater Youth Soccer, West Bridgewater Youth Baseball, it's all under the one organization. So the West Bridgewater Youth Football Association has football and cheerleading. The West Bridgewater Youth Athletic Association is baseball, softball, T-ball, soccer, basketball. It also includes indoor soccer, travel soccer and travel basketball. Those are all under those two umbrellas. One of the nice pieces about that for both is that we can kind of keep the cost down, so to speak, on the registration side of things because we pooled all of those resources together for each sport. But again, on the turf fields, right now it's, it's football and soccer, the two youth sports. Our organizations would love to offer more sports, have more kids on the fields and playing. As Jeff noted earlier, you know, gone are the days of us, you know, seeing a line of bicycles at the park and kids are all playing sports. Everything is organized right now. It's just, it's just the world we live in. So we want more kids playing. We want to give kids more options. So we'd love to offer field hockey at the youth level. We'd love to offer lacrosse. Lacrosse is a, a very highly played sport and we don't even have at the high school level and part of the main reason we don't have is we don't have the space for teams. Again, as you see in the bullet points above, the maintenance is low with water having a minimal effect. Our turf field, the football field out here today, you know, it can rain all morning and into the afternoon and then in the afternoon, teams are out there practicing. If that happens at the Howard Field for soccer, there's no, there's no games, there's no practices that day, it's canceled because it just, there's just not enough drainage there to support those. And then in addition to those, the fields itself, there will be walking trails, a small playground for some of the younger kids that have siblings that might be playing in games, a little grassy area for the kids to play in as well. Some of the trails, and you'll see, you might've seen when you came in earlier tonight, some of the charts we have, we'll show a couple of those in a moment. Some of the trails are ADA accessible, some are not, so if you want to venture in deeper, you're welcome to do that as well. Again, restrooms and storage. And then additionally, along Lincoln Street, the proposal for both Articles One and Two, have parking so that you can pull right up and actually walk from your car. So whether, uh, walk from your car, excuse me. So if you, you know, for grandparents or even those on a, on a blustery day, if you have kids that play and you don't want to get out of the car because either the weather's terrible or it's too hot and you want to have the AC on, you can actually be able to sit in the car and just watch the kids right from your car rather than having to go sit up on the field. Also for people that have, you know, disabilities and whatnot. Go to the next slide. So just to give you an idea of the indoor basketball facility, as Jeff mentioned earlier, you know, the two biggest needs we identified were soccer and basketball, those are what most of the athletes play, I mean, at the height, you know, the highest numbers. One of the nice things CHA did with this proposal is they gave it more of a barn or farm-type field to kind of fit in with the aesthetic of the town. So as you see, it's not, it's not just this big boxy auditorium. We did try to kind of blend in the aesthetic for this town, which we really liked the way it came out. And again, as I mentioned, it's kind of hard to read from here, but there's a number of storage areas within there. There are, there is a concessions area towards the front and then there's also a port outside so, you know, rain cover for the, for the, for the snack shack and things like that. Next slide. So again, just to give you an overhead view, so you'll see the basketball gym on the right there, the red building, the parking along that you can sit and view games from on the side here along Lincoln Street. And then the two smaller red buildings, both at the top and down the bottom here, both outdoor storage as well as indoor storage at the gymnasium. You can see the walking trails all along the back there along with the pond. The right in front of the pond is that small grassy area that I referenced in an earlier slide. And then the playground is kind of hard to see from here, but just to the right of that little grassy area is where, where a small playground is for, for what we intend younger kids to be on. Go to the next slide. And then this is just another overhead view, just to kind of give you the layout. You can see the size difference between the two fields for the turf fields, parking for 115 vehicles, which we do think is sufficient given that it, there's a lot of in and out for games. It's not that every single sport we played at the same time, you know, typically soccer, those fields would mostly be used in the fall and the spring, whereas basketball is in the wintertime this time of year. So there's usually not going to be situations where all of those fields and gyms would be used at the same time. And then again, this is just another view of the basketball facility itself, how it looks like inside. You can see the layout here and this one actually gives you a better idea of seeing, you know, where everything else is, the lobby, the concessions, the locker rooms, the, the storage and whatnot, and just the, the overhead view of what the gym looks like inside. Next slide. With that, I will hand it over to Glenn to talk about Article Two.
Good evening. My name's Glenn Turner. I'm here representing the WBYFA this evening. I'll be speaking on Article Two, which you can see right here. Okay, so Article Two in a nutshell is almost, is very similar to One minus the basketball building. The complex highlights would be the two turf fields. Field will meet the requirements for soccer, which a lot of this Greg already said, but which is the largest sport. Football, lacrosse, possibly, field hockey, et cetera, and they're all played with inside the soccer field. Both fields will be lighted to extend the time of the field use and the maintenance turf fields is low with water having a minimal effect, which Greg, Greg also mentioned. The complex will include walking trails, a playground, grassy area for young children to play, and some of the trails will be ADA accessible. On this next one, we'll see, we'll see a picture on it next will be the, an outdoor basketball court in lieu of the large building and four pickleball courts. Again, there'll be a, there will be a building for restrooms and storage and one field will also have the driver parking, which was the same as the first one. Games can be watched from their vehicles. So this is the similar picture to before minus the basketball facility, the indoor facility. The parking does increase to 129 from, I think, 115 Greg mentioned. Up in the right corner, there would be an outdoor basketball court, four pickleball courts, and then a small building which would house restrooms, some storage, possible meeting space and possibly some concessions. This is an overview of Article Two. Again, we have a outdoor basketball court, small building, four pickleball courts. You can see the, let's, I'm going to call them concrete walkways in gray. The brown walkways are through the woods. There's about a mile and a half of trails. Let's see what else. Playground, which is the light brown color and a rehab pond water feature. This is the small building that would take place of where the large basketball facility was. There is restrooms, family restroom, there's some storage space, possible concessions. And again, this would be in the same barn-type style as the large building was and some possible meeting space and room for future expansion. That's it.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bill Flynn. I'm a past member of the school committee and I've been part of the committee here working on behalf of the schools. Article Three is just a school project. It's items that would, that would happen at the school itself and some, it's going to be redoing the baseball field onto a turf. So current baseball field has drainage problems, much like over at the Howard Street. We have Chris and Sean in the DPW do a tremendous job trying to get these fields ready. Come August, things are nice and dry, everything looks fantastic, the kids get out there, we start having rain and it just, it kills things. The same thing happens on over at the baseball field. Baseball field becomes wet. The baseball coach, Jack Outerbridge, and his team do a tremendous job, not only in the off-season, but in a daily routine before practice and games to get that field ready. The home plate area kind of lies in a little bit of a wet area and they do a tremendous job on their own to, to really get that thing playable. We've brought in companies in the past also to help in, at a cost, but in the past couple of times, Justin May and his company have come in and donated their own time and spent a lot of time at that field just to help us get it going. In a few minutes, we'll have some pictures of way, what it looks like. There's some drainage problems, obviously, you'll see the water on the fields, but just to, to take a quick look of that field, once we see those pictures, has already been worked on twice this year and just to see how things have already grown back and what it's going to take again to get that thing playable. So what we're looking to do is turf this field over and then when it becomes turfed over, it becomes multi-use. In the fall, then it becomes a soccer field also, becomes a field hockey practice field. It helps out with the football teams. So it becomes multi-use, whereas now we can get out there a little bit, but it does get wet in the fall as well. So, and it also, like we've talked about in the past few minutes here, with the addition of maybe some other sports of lacrosse in the future and also middle school sports. But the main thing is here, and it was just brought up, is I'm the field hockey coach here in town and there is times this, this fall where it poured all day long, but yet we're able to get out there and play. The soccer teams don't have that luxury, but we can get out there, we play. We've gone to away fields where we've been able to get out there and play. The fields dry up nice, they're playable. We don't worry about the overuse on them and it's just, hopefully a fantastic way to get the kids out more and more instead of these fields falling apart and just, they need a lot of tender loving care. And just, just some of the pictures and you can see it's already grown in, this is at home plate. If we can just kind of go through them fairly quickly. Just grown in and, you know, it happens year after year and we spend a lot of time and a lot of effort and a lot of credit goes to Justin Mafis giving his own time here with his company and also Jack Outerbridge in the baseball program. Here's an overview where you would see the baseball field and then also a soccer overlay where we would be able to do, the soccer teams would be able to be over here on a rainy day and play and practice. And then our next slide would be just the, the same thing, just the overview and how well it looks. This field would also be lighted so that we do, you know, the fall as it's dark out here as we all came in the building at 4:00, but we would still have the experience here in the fall, the spring to use it more and more into the night. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Okay. Article Four. Again, not going to read it at this moment, we'll do that a little later, but we can just go to the next slide. Article Four largely consists of court improvements of some existing courts and then some additions. So at the Howard School, what we would be looking to do is replace the existing basketball court. Again, it's something that I don't think's received much love or attention over the last 20 years. The hoops are in sad shape. We'd replace the hoops, replace the surface on the court and it would get slightly expanded just to, just to tie out to a recreational-sized court, but nothing, nothing major. Council on Aging. We'd like to add four pickleball courts there. We heard from the Council on Aging as we started our process. If you're not familiar with pickleball, it is the number one rising sport in the United States right now. And as, as we all get older, I believe it's something that we'll all be looking forward to, if not right now. We'll all go out there and break a hip. From the high school, what we'd like to do is add one more existing, one more tennis court. There are four tennis courts at the high school right now. A high school match consists of five matches. So what happens right now is we play four matches. When one's done, the fifth happens, but what ends up happening is we have, we have two teams that sit around and watch one match play usually for 45, 50 minutes until that match is done, until it's done. So that's something we could fix pretty easily. And then in addition to that, we do not have a full, full-size outdoor basketball court in town, so we'd also like to add one of those behind the high school. So if we flip to the next page, this is, this is the Howard School. It's up in the upper right of this. You can see that, that court again is existing, it'll be cleaned up, squared up and put in place. The white building on the bottom is the Council on Aging. And then off to the left on the, on the field, if you will, behind the Council on Aging, we would locate the pickleball courts. The obvious question is why wouldn't you put them right behind, right behind in, in that grassy area? That grassy area contains active and old septic. So we, we are staying away from that and we will, we'll place them over on the tree line, if not adjust the tree line a little bit to give us a, a place where we can actually place them. So those are the two for, again, there'll be, we'll get some sort of walking path, something like that to get to the pickleball courts at the Howard, I mean, at the, at the Council on Aging. They would be free for use all day as opposed to if it was placed closer to a school, we'd obviously have to, you know, work around the school day. So it's in a prime location where people can go play throughout the day. The basketball court, as we said, gets used for multiple different activities, not just basketball at the Howard School, but it would be fixed up and made, made ready for basketball. Behind us here at the, at the high school, you can see in light color, you've got the four current tennis courts. Those would be, we'd add one more tennis court right alongside. of it, and then next to it there, we would also turn around and place a, a basketball court, giving the town a full-size basket, outdoor basketball court, and in making things make a little more sense when it comes to a tennis match for the high school. And we've talked about this. Let's skip the next slide. And at this point, I think I'm turning it over to either David or Anthony.
So I'll take it over. I'm Dave Gaddy. I'm the town administrator. Unfortunately, this all costs something. So I draw the lucky straw, and I get to tell you. In any event, Article One, the full cost for that is going to be somewhere around $18 million. Our engineering consultant, design consultant, they place all of these into a grid. They have extensive years of experience with this, and so they make, they decide as to what the estimates will go, are going to be. So in Article One, the entire cost of the project, of the Lincoln Street project, would be about $18 million. If you do not do the building, you decide to go with Article Two, you still get the fields, but you get some outdoor courts. The cost is just under $9 million. And then at the high school, to overlay that current grass turf, you would then go, to go to synthetic turf, you'd be looking at a cost of just under $2 million. All three of those Articles are barring Articles. So that means it's the moderator will instruct you, that that will require a two-thirds approval in order for it to pass. The fourth Article is what we call free cash. Basically, we're going to pay cash for it. It will not affect the tax bill. The money is already sitting there. It's a matter of how we utilize it. That cost is about $350,000. One last item to note, this town meeting warrant has five Articles on it. The last one is nothing to do with this presentation. It's just a, a little bit of a maintenance cleanup, but we would ask you to stay for that. That should be a quick vote. In the end, how does this all affect you as a taxpayer? And that is on the next slide. The next slide shows on Article One, on the average value home of just under $4,000, it will cost that person about $383 a month. On Article Two, I'm sorry, a year. I'm sorry, a year.
You really don't want them to like you, huh?
It just shows people are listening. That's, that's, alright. So yes, $383 a year. On Article Two, you will see that the cost there is a little over $200 per year. On Article Three, the cost is $50 per year. And then what I did was I also grouped it, because obviously there may be some combination of approvals and denials. So for example, if Article One and Three passes, meaning that you get the full gymnasium with the turf, and also re-turf the high school, you're talking $433 a year. In Article Two and Three, if that passes instead, it's $264. Keep in mind, if Article One passes, we will not vote on Article Two. If Article One fails, then we would vote on Article Two. Last is, is estimated operating costs. We are trying to be fully transparent and honest that although there is an upfront cost, we recognize there's going to be some long-term costs with, with this as well. There's going to be revenue opportunities. We'll be able to rent the fields, if the building is approved, we'll be able to rent that as well. But we are not trying to rely that on this modeling, because if we can do it, we're going to bring in extra money. It will help to defray the cost. But we would rather talk about worst-case scenario, so you know what those numbers are, knowing they could only get better, not worse. So in reference to operating costs, we do need to have a grooming machine. That is what you use on your turf field, because again, you don't have to mow it, for example. It is a lot less maintenance than grass. The machines cost about $8,000. That's already embedded into the proposal, so we shouldn't be looking for that money above and beyond. But we're letting you know that that's part of the cost. Depending on how the final pricing comes out, we may purchase one, we may purchase two. It's going to take about three hours to do each field. So if we had two, you could do two fields at the same time. You know, it's a little bit easier to do it that way. But again, a decision that we made at a later date. In reference to the clubhouse, we wouldn't be relying on a town department to maintain that. For example, we don't have a town janitorial staff. We sublet that out. So what we would do is that we would ask the youth associations to enter into an agreement with the Board of Selectmen in order to maintenance, maintain it and to operate it as well. And there, on their end, in order to pay for it, is that they will be charging some type of user fees. So again, that wouldn't be coming out on the tax side. We do expect, though, when it comes to the outdoor portion, that our DPW department should be able to maintain it at a fairly reasonable quote-unquote expense to the town. So what we've done here is that after doing some analysis, we're estimating that it'll take about a half a person on an annual basis in order to maintain the outsides. So what does that mean? That DPW person will be doing the grooming. That DPW person would also have to do some of the mulching. You know, obviously, you're going to have some grassy areas, you still have to seed it, for example. Right now, a cost of a DPW person is a little over $62, $63,000 per year, excluding overtime. And so we're using half of a person for the course of the year to give, just again, some transparency as to what the embedded cost is. This is not hiring an additional person. We do have an additional person that will be coming on staff at a later date, but that is not associated with this. This is already prepackaged as part of the DPW expense. We also know that we're going to have to have some materials we have to purchase, mulch and seed, for example. And the last is, is that there's going to have to be a governing board that's going to oversee the fields. For example, when does football play? When does soccer play? If we have lacrosse, when do they play? Do they play at night? Who goes first? What happens if a game goes into overtime? Who hires the refs? Who cashes the checks? I don't want to do that. So the governing board associated right now would be with the YAA, with youth sports, and one person at large. Basically, anybody that would volunteer to do it. The Board of Selectmen would appoint those people, would then manage that board, oversee that board, and make sure that governing board then governs those fields.
Really quickly, some key dates. So as Jeff said, this committee was established four years ago. Since then, we purchased the Russo Field in June 2020, and we hired CHA as, to do the initial design and some cost estimating. We've had a number of committee meetings, and a few weeks ago, we had a general information session. From here, should one of these two, should Article One or Two pass, we anticipate going up to bid very quickly. So over the winter, we'd work on the design and bidding process with a potential start date for construction in the spring. So we anticipate starting, hopefully, around May 2023, working throughout the year, finalizing construction in late 2023, and being ready to open in spring 2024. That's all, Jason.
Great. Thank you for that presentation. Before we get into the Articles, real quick, Senator Timblett is here from the State House. He wanted to give a one-minute update on what he's up to, and then we will get to the Articles.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator, for the invitation to our Select Board, Chair Kinnahan, Vice Chair Reyes, our Board Member Anderson. Thank you. And of course, our Town Administrator. Thank you very much, and your wonderful team, and to our Finance Committee, our School Committee, and each and every one of you as town meeting members. I thank you for what you do. Obviously, I just witnessed some very concise presentations. I do not intend to add much to your time burdens tonight, so I'll be very brief. Quite simply, I want to say thank you to each and every one of you for the opportunity to work for you folks, and I do mean work for you folks. The last two years, as your state senator here in West Bridgewater. Going forward, I have the privilege of serving for the next two years as your state senator. And I just want to let you folks know that I greatly appreciate this responsibility. I value it. I do consider it a privilege. I will never forget that I work for the people of this town of West Bridgewater. And to me, when you forget that, that's when it's time to go. I will never forget that, that I work for you folks. So I just want to thank you. Currently, I am the Chair of Public Safety and Homeland Security Committee. I am also the Vice Chair of the Labor and Workforce Development Committee, and four other committees as a rank-and-file member, where we do the lion's share of legislative work, vetting legislation, and of course, working on each and every legislative bill that's filed. We operate on two-year legislative sessions. We are coming to a close, obviously, of this session, and roughly, there are 6,000 legislative bills filed for every two-year session. So I look forward to working for each and every one of you. It's been my privilege to work with your department heads. My compliments to the Select Board. I believe you have excellent department heads in this town, so thank you. Thank you very much. And of course, I saw Chief Tebow on the way in. Chief, good to see you as always, and Chief Flaherty. And of course, to your School Committee, it's a privilege to work with Superintendent Bardwell and your DPW Director as well. So thank you very much to our Select Board and to our Town Administrator. But again, it's an honor to work for you folks. Please, never hesitate to reach out by way of a phone call or an email. And again, thank you very much. I look forward to working for each and every one of you. I hope that you all enjoy a wonderful Christmas, a happy Hanukkah, and a wonderful New Year. Thank you all, folks. Good night. God bless.
Thank you. So now we're going to go into the Articles. Article number one, Greg Stipkovich. Hope I said that right. I've been called a lot worse than that over the years. So just to read Article One, I'll read the entire article, and then I'll make the movement as well. So Article One is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or borrow a sum of money to be expended by the Board of Selectmen for the construction of an intergenerational sports complex, to include athletic fields, trails, athletic courts, and other related accessories, et cetera, along with a gymnasium fieldhouse to be known as the Russo Intergenerational Sports Complex, located, located at 134 Lincoln Street, or take any other action relative there to. Thank you. Is there a second? Oh, sorry, move. So, so I'd like to move that the town vote to borrow a sum of $18,378,000 to be expended by the Board of Selectmen for the construction of an intergenerational sports complex, to include athletic fields, trails, athletic courts, and other related accessories, et cetera, along with a gymnasium fieldhouse to be known as the Russo Intergenerational Sports Complex, located at 134 Lincoln Street. Thank you. Take here a second? Thank you. Finance Committee?
Article One was not recommended, seven to nothing.
Thank you. Board of Selectmen?
Recommended by majority.
Thank you. Would you like to speak to the motion? No, I would not. Thank you. I think you were pretty concise. So now, the, okay, so, sorry. So now we're going to have some discussion on the motion. What we're going to do is come up to the microphones if you have any questions. Remember, the discussion is specific to this article, not that whole presentation, just specific to this article. And I'm also going to say upfront, Article One, Article Two, and Article Three, I'm going to call for a secret ballot vote.
Good evening. Neil Conley, 376 Walnut Street. First of all, you guys did a great job putting this together. You really did. Four years in the making. How I'm going to vote, that's how I'm going to vote my business. But on the building, can you just tell me on the big one, on Article One, how big it dimension-wise is? I know the square foot, but like, is it 150 feet by 30 feet, or, just to give me an idea? But I can keep going to say that. If we put the building up, can you please put handicap doors in? My wife's in a wheelchair now, and when you go to open the door, they don't have that button. I have to sit there, wheel like this, try to hold the door, do karate moves. But I go to a lot of these places. My granddaughter's in soccer and basketball. A lot of places don't have that, where they should have it. I'm not saying it has to be a little restaurant. I'm saying something like this, definitely. And housing, and a question to Scott, or maybe Dave. These apartment houses, like over by the golf course, is that, do they pay this rate too, or is it just for single-family owners? Now, with it, like, they're going up on 106 there, would everybody in that house pay this fee, like every unit? Or is it just, the owner just pays that one fee? And what would the fee be, just say, just three, whatever the value of the property is?
Are you referring to the apartment complex right next to it?
Well, both, more or less, because it's, we're going to start going for, I guess, like, the one-up by Honeydew. They're building that now. How many units are in there?
So the one-up by Honeydew is going to be 24 units.
Well, that, I don't mean to cut you off. So 24, would all 24 units pay what we're going to pay as a single family?
The owner of that development will pay that rate.
Times 24 units?
Whatever the value is of that entire complex. So for example, it's going to be certainly, be worth a lot more than $382,000. So just use ballpark numbers. Let's assume it's worth 1.5 million. It's going to pay five times that amount that's on here. Whatever that valuation is, it'll be the same metric.
And so that'd be also down at the golf course. Those apartment houses, that'd be based the same way?
100%.
Already. Is it, is the land contaminated there? I heard it wasn't. I heard it was cleaned up when we bought it. Now I hear it's contaminated. Is that true or false? I'd love to see how much fake news is out there.
When we purchased this in 2020, I received a lot of feedback that this land was contaminated. None of it proven, but just a lot of feedback. So what we did was we went to work. Look, nobody can make any guarantees, but we try to work and be, and really do our jobs, and do our jobs at a high level as professionals. We wouldn't have asked for $600,000 at that time to purchase it, or this amount of money now, if we hadn't done some due diligence. So what did we do? One, we pulled all the plans that was for the original permit on this facility. Understand, when we bought this property, it was already permitted for eight homes or townhouses to be built. In order to do that, that engineer, Larry Silver, many of you know who that person is, extremely reputable, had already done all the testing. He'd had done 15 test pits to go out to make sure that the soil was not just okay for septic system, but anything else that would come out as a result of that testing as well. For anybody who doesn't know, test pits are pretty large. They're 10 to 15 feet wide, four to five, six feet, in depth, and they go down to the water level, five, six, seven, eight feet. You do 15 test pits, that's quite a bit of digging. But in addition to that, there was some area behind the greenhouses that other people said, oh, well, don't pay attention to the front. That one's okay. It's the back that's an issue. So we had our DPW department, along with our conservation agent, go out there and spend the day digging that up as well. And we can't find any issues with the soil. Now, if you do a full EPA study on any piece of property, you are not going to dig every inch of 16 acres. You just dig a handful, and then you make some assumptions from there. From what I'm being told, between those 15 test pits and what we dug, we dug more holes than what a 21E study would require, assuming that's what we went for. So the best of our ability, we can feel very confident in saying that it is not contaminated, at least from what people were telling us. In addition to that, there was also concerns that there was underground storage tanks or oil. Our retired fire chief, our previously retired fire chief, I met with both of them. We documented there was never any underground storage tanks there. We checked with the DEP. We checked with the, the Building Department to make sure that all the appropriate permits were pulled for storage and for demolition. They all were. So to the best of our ability, after doing our due diligence, we feel pretty confident in saying that land is not contaminated.
And are we going to take this out as a construction loan to start it? Are we going to take out one loan to do the whole project? Whatever the town decides to do.
It would be the whole project at once.
So we won't be paying like a construction loan? When you take it out, you pay all interest to your, over to the full note, then you get back into the principal payments? Is that how it works?
No, it would be the, it would be the whole 18 million in this case.
And can I also, where did you get these numbers for these projects? Say, like, the building, it's like eight to nine million. I don't know what it costs. And did somebody, you go out and talk to multiple people, or is it just one?
So the two gentlemen that are right to your right, they're the ones that gave it to us. They look honest.
So didn't need offer.
So in reality, is that this, at town meeting back in 2020, you provide $100,000 of funding in order to be able to go out and hire a professional design engineer, and under Massachusetts procurement laws, we have to go out to bid. So we can only hire people that are qualified, that meet certain criteria. And after going through that extensive process and meeting multiple firms, CHA was the one that was the most highly desirable and also gave us the best price. Their expertise is what we used in order to determine pricing. They're the ones who came up with it.
So I won't tie up to me. One last thing. So if you vote for Article One and Three, so it won't be 18 million, it'll be like 19 or 20 million, because it's two different loans. So you'll be borrowing for the, the building, number one, 18, just say 18 million. And then number three, Article Three, is another one point. So altogether, you'd be probably borrowing 20 million. And just whatever, whoever we hire, please make sure you do the background check on them. There's a lot of hacks out there. Believe me, they'll take the run, they'll get up and bail out, and they'll be stuck holding the bag. and they'll be stuck holding the bag. That's all. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion on this article? Please line up at the microphones. And please direct all questions towards me, and then the expert will answer.
My name's Robert Anderson. Live at 51 Commonwealth Ave, West Bridgewater. For full disclosure, I work for the DPW. There's quite a cost associated with this. And just so people understand, we are in preliminary discussions about a new school, which roughly has been estimated to cost $30 million. We have a water system issue, which is estimated somewhere in the area of 7 to 9 million to fix. And now we have a Forest Street Bridge that is out, which estimated somewhere between 1 and 3 million. Like commend the committee who volunteered their time to put this together. And in good conscience, I can't recommend anything to do with the Lincoln Street property. I know, Dave, you said that Silver did 16 or 17 test pits out front. We dug three holes, from what I'm being told by the backhoe operator, out back in the additional acreage. For those that don't know, the original property was, well, maybe not the original, but back in the 60s, when I was here, there was a place called Earthworks, and it was a greenhouse operation. And they routinely dumped unused chemicals in the back wooded area. Russo's, I'm told by people that worked there, that they did the same thing. And in fact, I was told that when they tore down some of their old greenhouses that contained asbestos, they buried it on site. They don't have a very good track record. They also had a site in Randolph that was extremely contaminated, that had to be fixed before anybody could buy it and build on it. So I don't have a problem. I know the town's growing. I know our kids need more sports facilities. But as far as the Lincoln Street project is concerned, in good conscience, I can't recommend it. I don't want, you know, it to turn into a love canal, where everybody says it's okay to build on it, it's okay to play on it, and then 25 years later, we got kids coming down with cancer. Those of you that have, you know, and I don't mean to make light of the situation, but you have, you know, your bumper stickers say the Jays train, Bella's Battle on the signs on your front lawns. Think about that before you vote on this, because I for one do not want to turn my kids, my grandchildren, I should say, into victims of cancer. In addition to costing a lot of people a lot more money, especially those in fixed incomes, you know, the older generation here that built this town to what it is today, might be forced out of their houses if we end up voting huge money to go through. So appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Jack Hughes? One second. Please, everyone, I don't care what side you're on of this argument, but please keep all applause to yourself. No, either way, please.
Thank you.
Jack Hughes, 640.
Okay, I'll allow it.
So Denise Reyes, Bob, I'm glad you came forward. That was brave. A lot of people wouldn't have done that, but there were some serious accusations made. So I think regardless of what's decided tonight, we bought a parcel of land, and there are some serious issues, at least accusation, allegations. And regardless of what happens tonight, it sounds like it's something that we need to look into. And I'm hoping to have further discussions with you, because it shouldn't just be accusations. We should have names, because clearly people know what happened. And we need to pursue that. That's all.
Thank you.
Jack Hughes, 640 North Elm Street. I had a couple of questions. But the first one is, can the finance committee explain why they unanimously are against this article?
We, as a committee, looked at all of the expenditures proposed tonight. And I think our feeling was, it's a lot of money. We have to, we've got a new budget season coming up. Taxes aren't going down. So we looked at Article two and thought that that was the best option, not, that would take away the gym. And that was unanimous, as you'll hear when we get to that part.
The next question I had is, the chart that showed how much money each individual homeowner would pay was, I believe, $383,000 for this article. And what is the average home that that's based on? What's the, what's, what's that range?
383,000.
383,000.
We don't just come up with that number. It comes from the Board of Assessors. That is what the average value for a single-family home is in West Bridgewater. Clearly, we have appreciation in the market. Clearly, many people in this home, in this building, probably have a house that is worth more than that. However, when you set your tax rate with the Department of Revenue, that is the number they use, and that is what your average single-family home valuation is in this town.
So if your house is worth 500,000, you're going to pay more like 450? So, or assessed at 500,000? Okay, thank you.
Hi, Jonathan Snell, 199 Ash Street. So I don't usually get up here and talk, actually. I never have before. I see a lot of friends and customers in the audience. If we disagree, it's nothing personal. I just feel pretty strongly about this. So I have three young kids. I have a lot at stake here. I hope they play sports, and if this passes, I'm sure they'll use this facility. But I'm strongly opposed to Articles one and two, and there's some reasons for that. It's not just emotional. The recreational space committee has done an excellent job developing this plan. They've spelled it out really well, and it looks good. They put a lot of time in and really appreciate that. There's definitely a problem. I'm not going to argue that we don't have enough fields, that the fields aren't good enough. But I think there are better solutions. I think the Lincoln Street location is too far from the schools. Transportation is an issue. 115 parking spaces are not enough for that size facility. This development only serves a small subset of our population, athletes, basically. And a lot of people in town are on a fixed income. We have a lot of upcoming expenses we're going to be looking at. PFAS iron removal plant, a new school. Route 106 could use a tune-up. There's a lot of different things like that. Fixed income really affected by that. Oh, and there's some new title, Five Men Minutes, that are coming down the line. Lot of expense associated with that, kind of unavoidable, unfortunately. So I think the best solution is to incorporate an indoor basketball facility in the new school that's coming. I think Dave said an informational meeting about 10 years, and I think it's worth holding out for that. We need that facility, but I think we should hold out for it. There's a lot of efficiency to upsizing a school project rather than expanding our footprint with new development. From construction aspect to mechanical, maintenance, and just a lot of efficiencies to making a school project bigger to incorporate this, rather than developing a new site and expanding our footprint. I think Article three does make a lot of sense. I love the idea of improving existing facilities that we already maintain. Oh, Article one, sorry.
Article one only.
Thank you.
All right, so I had one question. This, I don't know if this should go under a different article, but it specifically relates to the lifespan of the turf and the term of the loan for that turf.
On the loan front, the turf fields can be borrowed for 15 years on a loan, but the buildings, any buildings that we vote on, would be for 30-year loans.
Right. And what is the expected lifespan of the turf before it needs to be replaced?
So industry averages 10 to 12 years. On the outside, 15 years. Again, it all comes down to one of two things, usage, and do you appropriately maintain it? That's exactly why we're thinking about having our DPW department maintain it, because we want to be able to extend that lifespan. Originally, we had talked about having volunteers do it, because we would have cost, saved us some money, except that most likely, it wouldn't have gone down on a consistent basis. So the expectation realistically is 10 to 12 years, but have done well, maybe a few years above and beyond.
Okay, so we're going to have to replace a significant portion of that before the term is up on the loan?
So there's no doubt that there'll be an additional expense if we have to do something with it at a later date, which eventually you do. I mean, no car lasts forever, no car lasts forever, no field will. But the bulk of the cost on this is not just putting in the synthetic layer, it's also all the site work that's done. At a later date, all you're doing is the turf, because all the additional expenses have already been done.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Nothing personal, a lot of passion. No matter what side you're on, it's good to see. So thank you.
Hi, my name's Steve Bochamp. I live at 17 Lincoln Street. And I have a couple of questions. First of all, you said that Silver dug 15 test pits. I walk my dog by there probably four or five times a day, and I only saw four test pits dug by him, and none of them were where the greenhouses were. Can you retort to that?
Tim Hay Conserva, Tim Hay Conservation Agent. I do have plans that show 15 sites, and they vary in left and right, and in the center to the back, that Larry did do with the soil test analysis that he came up with. And they were observed pits as well.
The other question I have is, what are you going to do about like a sidewalk for the kids that are going to be going to this athletic field? Lincoln Street is horrible, even now. Cosco whizzing up and down 40, 50 miles an hour. I know the speed limit's 30, but there's no sidewalk. And how is that going to be safe for all the kids?
Well, we have you covered. You'll recall, a handful of years ago, we came here, and with your approval, we entered into an agreement with a developer to do the Lincoln Street project. There was a warehouse. I understand some people were against it, but overwhelmingly, it did pass. As part of the requirement of that permit, he is required to put in a sidewalk the entire duration of Lincoln Street, from Route 106 all the way down to South Elm. He is currently still in the permitting process with DOT. But once they complete their permitting process, they've already received permission or approval from our water department in order to add a water line. So hopefully, next spring, we'll start to see some of that development. And as a part of that development, there will be a sidewalk built entirely at his expense.
Jenny Williams, 47, Chiffon Circle. First of all, I do want to thank you for all your hard work. It's a lot to do. If you take one look at my body, you know I will never go into that athletic complex. But, my kids don't use it. They're not athletic. They didn't take after their father. I would like to say a statement first. I just, you go on Facebook, you hear all the chatter. There's a lot of haters out there, and a lot of people against us. I would event, I would love to have this. This would be awesome. But I don't think we need it now. I think if we could stop, this isn't the article, but it's one of my biggest pet peeves with West Bridgewater. Stop building. We're a farming and agricultural community. It's one of the things that brought me here. I'm sure it's one of the things that brought you here. I know we have to go, but we don't need a 24-unit condo right in, on 106, right by the highway. Traffic is atrocious right there already. Okay. But my question is, it does tie into that. Traffic, have we done traffic studies? And that intersection is horrible already. What is going to happen to that?
So again, as part of the project that we did with this developer, a requirement of his is that he has to rework that entire intersection. So again, you may recall, because we had this conversation at town meeting, his requirement is that he is going to line up Crescent Street with Lincoln Street. We know how horrible that is, and trust me, I get the reports from the police department. So we know how bad it is, and part of it is because it doesn't line up. He has already purchased, the developer has already purchased and cut a check to Mr. Dempsey. He owns that house, because that house is in the way. So he's already cut a check. He's already bought the property, and he is going to be allotting those two roads, putting in a four-way stoplight, along with additional lanes. So coming in one direction, there will be three lanes. And going in the other direction, there will be two. It will allow a turn lane into Lincoln Street. So we recognize that there's some issues there. But at his expense, he's going to be addressing them to the best that we can address it. Really what we need to do, I know this is not ideal, but what we really need to do is have two lanes, 106 the entire width. That's going to be extremely cost prohibitive. There's other issues with that, because it increases speed, which we all have to be concerned about. But to your specific question about that intersection, that project is already in the works. It's been approved at town meeting. We're just waiting for the DOT access permit. And hopefully, come spring, we'll start to see construction on that to fix and mitigate that problem.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm James Snag. I live at 58 South Elm Street. This, what I'm talking about is one, two, and three. All have the same problem. How many people on this committee has walked out back on Lincoln Street? Raise your hand. All right. That'd be good. At least a couple of people are honest. Take a walk out there. It's wet all the time. The baseball field here, when we built this beautiful school, they moved the football field up there, because that was wet. And then guess what? Baseball is playing on the same wet surface. They did nothing when they built this school. That's going to be wet out there. I guarantee you, you're going to have a lot of problems. Take a walk out there. Go ahead, take a walk out there. Bring your hip boots, because you're going to need them. I walk the woods all the time. I know what I'm talking about. That's all.
Well, this is the first time I've ever talked in front of this many people.
Please give your name and address.
Paul Milne at 39 Brooks Place. I 100% agree with, and I'm glad that there's members here that care about our children. I've only had one child go through this school system. But I can't think of a worse time to do anything right now with the inflation and the availability. I work in the field, and I see it all over the place. Long lead times, can't get the product, everything. It's catastrophic. You brought up the traffic. That's good, but nobody's brought up the big warehouse that's going to go in across the street. And then, I don't know how many people use oil here, but you're paying $1,000 or more every two to three months. And then to have additional taxes added on to you, it's a high cost for people, especially whoever's a single-income family or whatever. But like I said, I can't think of a worst time to build anything right now with the inflation that's going on. It's ridiculous, the prices. I mean, how many people have had, people come to your house and do service work or do anything? Everything is astronomically high. Just think about it.
Thank you. Is there any new information to bring to the debate?
Please come to the microphone, state your name and address.
My name is James Dewitt, and I live at 347 North Elm Street. Okay, the 18-plus million dollars you'd like to borrow, what is the interest rate?
Right now, it'd be about 4.5% is the estimate.
How can you get a loan for 4.5%?
We would put the whole amount out to bid, and the banks, whoever wants the business, submit bids to us, and whoever has the best true interest cost would be awarded the bid.
So you're not guaranteed 4.5% at this moment?
No. Every month, I get a report from our fiscal advisor showing all the other borrowings that have gone on in the area. So when we were doing this research, most recent, Taunton just did a $10 million project, and it came in at about 3.6, 3.7%. They have the same bond rating as us. So that's where I was getting that information from, assuming that it would go up a little bit.
All right, no further questions. All right, no further questions.
Peter Frederickson, 14 Mill Pond Road. I wanna speak in favor of the article, I'd like to thank the committee for dedicating four years of their lives to this project, so, appreciate that, and all you do for our kids. I have a question for, maybe the town manager would know, what was the cost of this school when we voted on it?
63 million.
63 million dollars, and Jeff, I believe your slide showed that the town increased its population by over 1,000 people, 1,000, is it households of people? 1,000 people, yeah, 1,000 people in the course of the time that this school was built. My point is, I originally thought, you know, I have no skin in this game, my children are gonna be graduating high school by the time this is built, but I do have skin in the game, in that I own property in this town, and I really like seeing my property value go up. And infrastructure counts, having, you know, the YAA, a place where your kids can go play safe, it counts. All this stuff counts for your property value, and people wanting to come to your town, and people wanting to build a home in your town. You think those 100 homes are gonna be built if you didn't have this nice high school? You all voted on it for a reason, and I feel like you're being short-sighted if you just look at this as, you know, the tax bill, think of your property values and what it's gonna do in the long term. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there, no, nope. Is there any new information to be brought up to the debate?
Mary Nguyen, I live at 38 Sunset Avenue. My concern is, I love this idea, the ideas, and it's very supportive of the town moving ahead and doing things that address the needs in the town. One of the things that I'm concerned about is that by putting in a lot of turf, we have a big problem, a 7 to 9 million dollar problem with PFAS in our water, and one of the things that turf does is it erodes into PFAS problems, and I just would like to bring that to the attention of the group. I don't know if there are alternatives to traditional turf, because I have walked through the muddy, you know, fields, and seen people playing, but I don't necessarily wanna push something down the road either, that could be also another, a problem on a different situation.
Jason, can I just address that?
Yes, you may.
So Christine, could you do me a favor, could you go to Slide 45 for me, please? So, thanks to our consultant, because again, this is what they do every single day, this is an example of a project. Every single project is required to get tested. We all know PFAS is not good, and no other chemicals are either, so all of these are tested when they are, when it's built, and tested as it goes out the door. It's a legitimate concern, it's a serious concern, it's a requirement to test it, this will get tested, this is just an example of how they do it, but we placed this on here so that way you could see it.
Hello, I'm June Metcalf, 268 River Street, West Bridgewater, Mass. Anyways, I'm nervous, and I just want you to know, for incidental information, I just wanna say, first of all, the same thing--
Can you please speak into the microphone?
I live on River Street, which, also River Street, 106, Lincoln Street, they're all busy roads, and if students are gonna have an athletic field on Lincoln Street, they're gonna have to be bused, so I would wish that you would consider the Gibson property, which is a historic farm in West Bridgewater, it's on Bryant Street. The town is gonna need a new school, they need athletic fields--
That is out of scope of the article, I'm sorry.
It's not, because you need, you need athletic fields, and you could combine the two, and I wish you can consider it. The town of West Bridgewater has first refusal on the Gibson Farm property, please consider it, thank you.
Do you have new information to add?
Well, hi, I'm Ruth Bochamp, I live at 17 Lincoln Street, and the gentleman over there said that our value of our property will go up, if we have all this. Well, I live on Lincoln Street, I don't think my property is gonna go up, I think it's gonna go down. Who's gonna wanna buy my house? I'm gonna live right where you can see that big monstrosity that they're gonna build on, on the clover leaf, and then you've got this, this thing on, you know, for the kids, and you're killing me. You're just, you're killing me. And I was, I was, I was talking with one of your members up there before, I'm not gonna mention the name, well, why don't you sell your house? Well, who's gonna wanna buy my house?
Ma'am, let's please stay in scope of the article.
Well, that was--
Do you have any information to add?
No, I just don't, I don't think it's necessary right now, as everybody's saying, there's too many builds coming up, it's just, I don't think it's right.
Thank you.
Eric Hackenson, 25, Monmouth. Couple of questions. One, is there an expense list of, like a breakdown of the certain, you know, like paving, paving the parking lot? Is there an expense list?
Yes, when, when the consultant firm gave us the, gave us the pricing, it's all itemized as pages and pages of itemization.
To show us, though.
I'm sorry?
To show us, to show the taxpayers.
Sure, I mean, it's a public document, we can, we can certainly make sure it's available.
One thing that I have to say, a friend of mine brought it up, you know, it's a good point, so East Bridgewater soccer fields, okay, they have reclaimed asphalt instead of a paved parking lot, it's not the most aesthetic-looking, okay, but it does save an expense, it saves a huge expense in paving parking lot, and we're getting tillings for free by tearing up all of our roads. There's just one little expense that could be shaven off, just little things to think about. Okay? That's one thing. Secondly, I think all these articles are tied together, and if the Article 3 is even considered, then you don't need two fields on Lincoln Street if you're gonna have an artificial turf, baseball soccer field at the high school, because that's gonna be corrected, so then you lose one field over there. That's just another thing to consider. And then, nothing was brought up about the food pantry, which could weigh or nay voters at the site on Lincoln Street, that hasn't been mentioned. Then there's one more thing, and I don't know if this is hearsay, but is Lincoln Street gonna be a one-way, once that intersection is put in?
That's the very first time I've heard that.
I had a couple of more questions, Jack Hughes, 640 North Elm. If this, if we pass this article, what would the, when you're playing soccer, is the field lighted? So, has a lighting study been done to, is there any houses on Lincoln Street that are affected by lights being on, and how late would the hours of operation be for the lights?
So I'm gonna ask our consultant to answer the question about the lighting study, it's all downlighting, but I'm sure they can answer it. In reference to the hours, I think that's why we need to have a governing board, and remember that governing board is made up of our residents here in town, so they have to be sensitive to all of us, but they're the ones who will make that ultimate decision. The selectmen, because they oversee the governing board, in theory can overrule them, but I think we have to be all reasonable. We don't, for example, on 106, the lights don't stay on until midnight, you know, so I have to assume that whatever reasonableness we use on the school, we would do on Lincoln Street as well, and do you mind taking that question, please?
All right, Mike Moonin, I'm a landscape architect with CHA Consulting. So the lighting systems today have little or no spillage, even off the field, so the residents that are close to the fields are not within range of having light spillage onto their properties.
The last question I had to do was with sidewalks. You said the sidewalks were being built by the developer across the street, so that means the sidewalk that he's building is probably on his side of the street, correct?
It's gonna be part, it's gonna be on the opposite side, we did that for two reasons. One is, is that Chris, DPW director, along with the towns engineer and I walked it, if we place it on his side, we're going to impact some people's homes on that side, for example, somebody built a pretty, a nice stone wall, we don't wanna impact residents, we already know some of this is gonna impact, we know that, so we can't say we're not gonna impact, but let's impact as little as possible. The second thing is, I have a dream, and the board knows this, I want one day that somebody's going to be able to walk from that athletic complex all the way to the high school and never get off a sidewalk, and that's why we started on River Street, we're moving down River Street, this guy does Lincoln Street, it's gonna take a few years, but I'm gonna get South Elm Street done, that's our commitment, I know that's what the board's commitment is. So as a result, we require him to place it on the opposite side of the, where the field is.
So the last thing is the parking lots, or it's gonna be a regular asphalt parking lot with lined and striped, because I've gone to the East Bridgewater field, and I ride a motorcycle, and it's terrible to go in there, and I'd rather it be paved, I like that idea.
Hearing no more discussion, we're gonna move towards a vote, I'm gonna have the town clerk come up and explain the voting process, this is a two-thirds vote, and like I said earlier, this is going to be a secret ballot vote, so we have the most accurate vote total possible.
So we're gonna set up different areas with ballot boxes, you have a blue card, this is your ticket to vote, do not lose this card, do not throw it away in the bag with your unused vote, because if you come up for the next article and you don't have it, you're not voting, so you're gonna, there's gonna be two tallyers, one is gonna put a check mark on your blue ticket, saying that you're voted, one of them's gonna give you a yes and a no, you're gonna separate them, you're gonna put your vote in the box, you're gonna throw the other one in the brown paper bag, and then you're gonna please go back to your seats, because this gets very chaotic, so if you go back to your seat and sit down, it'll get done faster and easier. So I'm gonna call the tallyers up right now, get them sworn in, and then we will get going.
Hello, everyone, thank you for voting. Article 1, 95 yes votes, 262 no votes, motion does not pass. No applause, thank you. My glasses. Okay, Article 2, I'm gonna read the article, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow a sum of money to be extended by the Board of Selectmen for the construction of an intergenerational sports complex, to include athletic fields, trails, athletic courts, and other related accessories, et cetera, to be known as the Russo Intergenerational Sports Complex, located at 134 Lincoln Street, or take any other action relative thereto. I move that the town vote to borrow a sum of money, excuse me, a sum of 8,750,000, to be expended by the Board of Selectmen for the construction of an intergenerational sports complex, to include athletic fields, trails, athletic courts, and other related accessories, et cetera, to be known as the Russo Intergenerational Sports Complex, located at 134 Lincoln Street." Is there a second? Thank you. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommended unanimously 7 to 0 on Article 2.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Is, do you wanna speak to the motion, I mean, it was pretty much covered, but if you want, I assume there's no discussion based on what we've all, so I guess we can move towards a vote? Okay, we're gonna call for a vote now, we're gonna, this is again, another two-thirds majority vote, it's gonna be balloted, the same thing. Article 2, there was a total of 362 votes. Yes?
No.
Oh, total people registered, okay, sorry. Okay. Yes votes, 137, no votes, 203. The article did not pass. Moving on to Article number 3.
All right, let's give this another try. Article number 3 is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from availability of funds to borrow a sum of money to be expended by the Board of Selectmen to turf the existing baseball field at the West Bridgewater Middle Senior High School, or take any other action relative thereto. I move that the town vote to borrow the sum of 100, I'm sorry, $1,965,000 to be extended to the Board of Selectmen to turf over the existing baseball field at the West Bridgewater Middle Senior High School.
I heard a second, okay. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommended by a majority, 6 to 1.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, I would. We recognize that we do need some athletic facilities or fields for the youth and for the high school kids, I understand this is still $2 million, but it's in a space that we already have, it's cleaning up an area that we really are spending money on every year anyways. Who doesn't like to drive by this town on a Friday night or a Thursday night and see a football game, and see all the kids and everybody at the game? A lot of you people there are at the games. We need to do something, we need to help, so the people that have been, a no vote, please reconsider, think about, you know, you know, these lights won't be anywhere near anybody's homes or anything, they'll be up where the baseball field is, but we do need some facilities for the kids, for the high school kids, for the young kids, we really need to find some, some common ground here. Thank you.
Is there any discussion on the motion of new information?
Robert, 51 Commonwealth Ave, employee of the DPW. I don't disagree that we need to do something with that football, with that baseball field. I mow it, and I can't get by the fowl line without sinking in the mud, but, given the fact that, you know, artificial turf, and I'm no scientist, but I guess it gives off, as it, as it disintegrates or degrades, it gives off the PFAS, or whatever they call them there for the water, is there any other alternative to like, lifting that field up, building it up, and doing it with regular grass? Because I also understand that there are some school zones that are banning artificial turf because of the PFAS, and because of injury rates, had, did anybody look into lifting the level of that field, and building on the existing grass? Just asking, you know, because like I say, that, that baseball field was basically built on a swamp, it used to be the old high school's football field, and they had the same problems down there, the track always flooded, if you tried to mow by the grandstands, you landed up having to get pulled out of the mud, so whoever, whoever built it down there, you know, should've thought of that. I think somebody turned my mic off.
I promise I did not.
That, that, that might've been on purpose, but anyhow, I would just rather look into lifting the existing field up and keeping it natural grass.
Thank you. Do you wanna speak to that, to answer any questions?
I just think that it's gonna be a major cost, no matter what we do, if we build it up, we're gonna--
If we build it up, we're gonna be mowing it every year. When it breaks down, we're gonna be rebuilding it and rebuilding it. I think the artificial surface is the best way to go. There are other school systems that have multiple turf fields in use to help out. So I just think that the turf field's the best way to go.
Mr. Murray, New York, 376 Wallace Street. I just wanna say something real quick. The committee that put this together did a great job. You have nothing to put your head down. What's going on in this country now is a bunch of bullshit. People are starving, starving--
Please watch your language, thank you.
They're starving. There's-- people are sick and that we got an old group of people in here. When I used to come to town meeting, people would stand up here. They wouldn't fall for nothing. You had to fix it or whatever. But in all that, all you've done a great job. And second of all, how much is this gonna cost per household roughly? If we vote on this right now? What's it?
If we do this, it's an implication of about $12.50 a quarter for the 50 bucks. So if you're on the high end of this, it's no more than 20 bucks a quarter.
One last thing, when will you start it if it passes? To say, I mean, will it be done?
That would be just the same about as Anthony's timeline. We would go out to bid. We would go out to bid and we'd start as soon as possible. So hopefully, baseball or whatever would be-- the spring of '24 would be ready to go.
Thank you.
Hey, how are you? Brian Bell, 43 Highland Ave. I'd like to thank the committee again for all their hard work, trying to get the kids what they need in this town, but they apparently don't want it. But now we own a vacant lot over on Lincoln Street there. What's gonna happen with that?
That is out of scope of the article.
I was curious.
But that's out of scope of the article.
Okay, I didn't know if we could sell it and maybe make some money to do the fields right. All right, thanks, I was curious about that.
Okay. Okay, so no further discussion. We're gonna move towards a vote. This is again, another 2/3 vote. This is a ballot vote. And this will be the last ballot vote, I promise, for this town meeting. The results are in. With 258-- no, wait. 298 total votes. Yes received 187 votes. No received 111 votes. The motion fails. Article 4.
Article 4, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow a sum of money to be expended by the Board of Selectmen for replacing the existing basketball court at the Howard School, creating pickleball courts at the Council on Aging, and adding one tennis court and one full-size basketball court behind the West Bridgewater Middle Senior High School or take any action relative thereto."
Is there a sec? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I gotta move. "Move that the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum of $350,000 to be expended by the Board of Selectmen for replacing the existing basketball court at the Howard School, creating pickleball courts at the Council on Aging, and adding one tennis court and one full-size basketball court behind the West Bridgewater Middle Senior High School."
I hear a second. Okay, Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously by the Finance Committee.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommend unanimously.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
I think it's been spoken to at this time.
Okay. Would anyone like to speak to this? Any discussion? Hearing none. This is gonna be a simple majority vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it. Motion passes. By majority. Okay, Article 5. This is a-- now, just for you guys-- no, this is a 9/10ths vote, so it needs at least 90% to pass. Okay, Article 5. Ms. Reed?
"Move that the town vote to transfer from the FY23 Building Department budget a sum of $335.13 to be expended by the Building Department for an FY22 unpaid prior year bill."
I hear a second. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee, you voted unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommend unanimously.
Wanna speak to the motion? Explain what it is? Yes.
So this is what we just call old-fashioned, archaic, state-government bureaucratic stuff. Literally, that's what it is. Fiscal years run until June 30th, July 1st to June 30th. All budgets just have to pay their bills by June 30th. Every once in a while, because it's July 4th holiday, you only have 10 or 12 days to be able to get all your bills in. This was missed. It's just a traditional bill. And under Massachusetts municipal law, you have to go to town meeting and have them pay a previous year's tax bill, even though the money was in the budget. We just couldn't spend it. So we just need to ask you to clean it up and take the vote. Yes, please.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'm gonna call for a vote. And again, this is a 9/10ths majority vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. Motion passes and that concludes this annual town meeting. The time is 9:00 PM. This town meeting is now dissolved. Thank you.